The pair of?
Yeah.
If you know, you got room.
Please arise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alvin Bungie?
Here.
Alvin Raynkrapp?
Here.
Alvin Corbett?
Here.
Alvin Turner?
Here.
Alvin Bill?
Here.
And Alvin Lewis?
Here.
Can I get a motion for approval on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes, please?
Submove.
And, and the amendment meeting minutes for six thirteen.
Submove.
Have a second?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Submove.
Have a second?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to special items, we have none, appointments to the boards and commissions, none, scheduled public comments, Caitlin Cunningham, reference public pride fest. Please approach the podium and state your name and address, please.
Okay.
Like you're here.
Thank you so much. Happy Pride, y'all. I guess it's technically July now, but as you well know, I'm gonna celebrate all year long. Um, my name is Caitlin Cunningham. I use say them pronouns. Uh, my address is thirty-eight hundred Jungle Tree Drive, Columbia, Missouri, six five two zero two. And I'm the owner of the Dandelion Cafe here in Ashland at one oh two South Columbia. Uh, six five zero one zero. So I wanted to come in, you guys, uh, we've in the past, I've, you guys have, uh, had me come in and do like a, for a couple of different meetings, but, uh, Ashland is growing and y'all are putting together a process now, and I think that's wonderful. Uh, not so great that I was one of the first guinea pigs to run through the process, but, uh, no problem on the hoops, and I think we've gotten everything done. I know Kyle received the insurance packet today, uh, for the special event, so we've taken care of that. Um, because of the increase in making sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's, I've got, uh, the Ashland Pride Festival is now an LLC. Um, and then after this year's festival, once I can breathe a little bit, I plan on working to make it a nonprofit, so that it can better reflect kind of the, the purpose and the goal of it, which is to, um, provide enrichment and resources for the community. Um, this year, a little bit about the festival, and then you guys are welcome to speedball questions at me. Um, we have over fifty unique artists, vendors, and community resources that are going to be coming. That's about twenty more than we had last year, so that's really, really exciting for us. Um, we have, uh, seven or eight designated, um, safety, uh, crowd management trainers, or trainees, rather, so they have, you're required to have one person for every two hundred and fifty people you expect. Last year, we estimated around eight hundred people showed up, so we're shooting for a thousand this year, so we needed four, and we doubled that because we felt like that was really important to make sure, um, we had good coverage there. So we had a meeting at the cafe. Everyone went through the slides together. We took the tests, and they will have, um, high visibility neon green volunteer shirts on, so they'll be in, uh, different quadrants. We also have been working with equipment share, um, and so we will have radios to make sure that communication is as succinct and exact as it needs to be, because something of this size, I want to make sure that I'm not surprised by a problem that I can't foresee happening. Uh, parking plan is a little more specific this year. I have been working with Leslie Martin, making sure she has copies of everything. I actually just emailed Scott the copy of our packet, our vendor packet, um, for your information, and if you want a copy of that, just shoot me an email. I'm happy to get it to you. Um, parking is suggested in the lots, uh, where it typically is, which is over by the park, not the community pool. And then if you have to overflow into high school, we end up doing that. Um, we do have the handicap parking over by the tennis courts, so we always designate that lot completely for our food truck alley and for handicap parking. Um, and so we will have people over there directing traffic and making sure that that's going well. We do have a parade this year. It's not going to be a super huge one, but we're really excited for the opportunity for the community to join us in celebrating. Um, we've got, I think, eight different groups right now, but it's one of those things where, because it's a community parade, people are welcome to join us day of. I'm gonna have extra flags, bandanas, things like that. And then it is, I think, a point seven five miles, so it's gonna be like a thirty minute, and then, um, we'll ceremoniously walk into the park and we kick off the festival. We do also have our second annual five K, which has, as of today, thirty in-person people and five virtual. So we're really excited to be partnering with Empower Coaching, uh, and she is a local, uh, life coach and health coach, and she had three people last year in the run, and so we have grown ten times. So, just bragging about that. Been working with emergency services, and so they will have an ambulance on site. Um, it is not a designated one. That costs two hundred dollars an hour, and he said that was unnecessary. Uh, but it will be there unless they get called away for an nine-one-one, and then we do also have a trained paramedic who's going to be at our info booth all day as a volunteer. Uh, the fire department, I've been talking with them. They haven't really gotten back to me regarding whether or not we need, um, uh, fire extinguishers every fifty feet. That was one of the things that was in the, uh, the new requirements, and because it's an outdoor festival, I don't think they're necessarily making it a very big priority to get back to me. Um, I don't foresee fire suppression being a concern at all, but if you do, we can definitely figure something out. Uh, log vote will be back. They will be our only alcohol vendors this year. They will be centrally located again. And then any other than that, the only thing I wanted to make sure that the city and myself were on the same page about would be the bathrooms, because I want to just make sure that, um, we're obviously continuing to respect. I know that we tend to leave the park cleaner than we found it. Um, it's something that we're really proud of, and so I just want to make sure the bathrooms are gonna be set and good to go, or if there's anything I need to do in terms of making sure that I check those and bring toilet paper and do that, then I'm happy to assist the city. I know that needs are long and resources are short, so just don't break it during. No, right? Nope, that's not, uh-uh. That is not on my agenda right now. Um, other than that, that is what was on my list to share with you all. Um, like I said, I do have, uh, my email address if you have any questions or want any of the copies of the documents that have been provided to our vendors. Yeah.
Any questions?
Uh, can you remind me what the date is?
Yeah, absolutely. And I actually do have some posters, so if, uh, any of you, um, either in Columbia or Dred City or in Ashland, it is July twelfth. It is from nine to two o'clock. We will have, um, a separate venue for our music and a separate venue for our entertainment. Uh, we will also have a youth area again. This year, we are adding a bounce house, which was worked into the insurance. Uh, um, but so we're really excited to be able to keep, uh, providing a variety of entertainment and resources for the community.
Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Gorgeous. All right. I'm gonna leave you guys a couple of these. Um, two of, I'll leave a couple of the five K ones, and then a couple of the regular ones. If you use them, great. If not, you're welcome to just drop them back by the cafe. So, thanks, y'all.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearing, I see none. Introductions and first reading. Council Bill number two zero two five dash two four, in ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a subdivision warranty agreement for Middle Creek Platte Two. Staff four, please.
All right. Authorization is needed to accept the water and sewer infrastructure for Platte Two, Middle Creek. Uh, this plat consists purely of water and sewer. There are no streets. There is no stormwater. So, uh, that's what's needed for just Platte Two. So if the board and all of these persons agrees with staff recommendation, the board hopefully will accept the sewer and water public infrastructure for Middle Creek Platte Two. This is what we voted on the last meeting.
Five lots?
It is. It's, uh, eight.
What's seven? That plat in particular is five lots. But we didn't move to seven and eight, was it?
Uh, it consisted of one, eight, I think, five. One, three, five, six, and eight. That's Platte Two. Platte One was Platte Two and Four.
No one wants left of seven?
And nine.
And nine?
Yes.
Any questions for staff? Can I get a motion to approve in Council Bill number two zero two five dash two four?
Submove.
In ordinance for the authorizing mayor to execute a subdivision warranty agreement for Middle Creek Platte Two. Have a second?
On second.
Alvin Lewis?
Hi.
Alvin Bill?
Hi.
Alvin Turner?
Hi.
Alvin Corbett?
Hi.
Alvin Raynkrapp?
Hi.
And Alvin Diddy. All right. Moving on to old business, we have none. Moving on to new business, resolution two zero two five dash four zero. A resolution authorizing disposal of surplus property. Staff four, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if you have a picture in your packet, but basically in Public Works, we have a large mountain of scrap steel, but we've, you do, great. That, uh, we've accumulated over the years. Thank you. Yeah, it's, it's, it's something to see. Um, you name it, it's appliances, things we picked up off the road, auto parks, broken castings, old pipe, you name it, um, just following the regulations and, uh, getting approval for that. It's, uh, anything of use has been removed, anything we could foreseeably use. I know we pulled some metal parts and cut pieces of fence of straight pipe. So what you see remaining is, uh, of no value to us, so the intent is to bring that in, um, to a local scrap dealer and have that and get the funds back and presumably put that back into building units or whatever. But that is the, uh, I recommend approval. If you, for whatever reason, want to see it, I can, I can definitely show you, but, uh, or add to it, in fact. If you have anything there under your garage, throw it on there, but, uh, that's, uh, that's the agenda. If there's any questions?
Have the basketball wheel that took out the skid steer window?
Probably.
So, just to clarify, you will be selling the materials, and then that money will come back to the city from like whatever the scrap value of this pile of?
Exactly. We're gonna haul that, yes. Uh, only, we're gonna bring that to the scrap dealer. It's per pound. Um, I hear prices are kind of low right now, but it is what it is, because we got a clean house, so, um, and so we'll get the money back from the scrap dealer per pound, whatever that is, and those funds will go back to the city.
And is there enough in there to make an extra squad car?
Don't make, maybe buy a seat or a headlight, something like that.
The DeLorean, perhaps?
It's anybody's guess what that return will be.
It looks like there's at least a fuselage, we'll say, that are sitting on top of the pile from what I see in the board packet.
Yeah, it does look like one. It's, it's tough to tell right now what's in there, but it's literally stuff. Some of it predates all employees. They don't know what it is. So we're cleaning house, because if you didn't know, Public Works, because of its size, kind of becomes like the third stall garage. It's here where you put stuff, because you don't know what to do with it or what it is. And so we're just trying to make use of the space we have, and, uh, this is part of it. The second part of it will come, uh, later when we, we will sell, actually sell items like, um, and the, the list is growing, but, uh, there's motors, there's high vac units, there's different stuff that is, is worth more than scrap, so we'll sell that on, uh, gov deals, and that'll be kind of a process, but also be coming to the board for that, for approval. Those items will be probably forthcoming next meeting, hopefully. If not, yeah, I think we can do that in July. That'll be a pretty long list of different things that we're also gonna sell outright, not scrap, but second part of it.
How long has that stuff been around?
What's that?
That stuff you're talking about?
As you said, some of that stuff's been in there for years.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Is it over by the water pump? No.
It's at Public Works proper, in the yard, in the back of the yard. I mean, honestly, it was spread all over the place, and when we got into a pile, it became pretty big. Yeah.
I mean, just look at this. It's like old, like grills and like, there's a fifty gallon barrel in there.
Dump things on roads. I mean, we pick things up, you would not believe it, so there's appliances that get dumped.
Liberal lanes.
And rebar. Old motors. Don't go to anything we have, things like that.
Can I get a motion to approve, resolution two zero two five dash four zero, resolution authorizing disposal of surplus property?
Submove.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to the chorus, mayor's report. Uh, I know this is gonna be beating a dead horse, but I think there's gonna be a couple people talking about this tonight. Striping in front of City Hall. Tell me your opinion. Have you been practicing, Gavin?
Yeah, so as part of my report, the, uh, striping is a little bit of a learning curve, because we didn't even have a walk behind strippers. We had a driver striker, so there's a, there's a learning curve, which we are doing currently, but our main focus, getting a little bit in the Public Works report, has been concrete pours, concrete repairs. So, um, right now, the two, uh, full timers we have and two seasonals are, are pushing hard on concrete pours. They were on Peterson today. Um, it's a short week this week, so I think we're gonna keep pushing on concrete while the weather's good, but, uh, if you're asking me for a date, uh, probably by the end of July, I'll be putting down paint for sure. Uh, also, part of this report is numerous, numerous stormwater concerns. Uh, you know, just the other day, we had eight point three inches of rain again, and I'm still getting calls about stormwater issues. Um, it's kind of getting into prioritization here, but I understand the weather's shining, the, it's sunny out, it's a good time to throw paint, and we also need to do a lot of other things, but that and with the learning curve, I don't, what I don't want to do here is start throwing paint and have it look some par, so I want to make sure that their skillset is up, and how we do that is basically, we put water in that machine and we throw water, and we put water down instead of paint, which is a safer thing to do. So, short answer, too late, is probably by the end of July, uh, we're gonna be putting paint on Main Street, uh, downtown. Uh, prior to that, though, we're gonna actually put it at the Optimus Club parking lot. We're gonna strike that first as our first kind of trial run, but again, main thing here is, is, is the learning curve, and driving one of those things is just definitely different than pushing one. It comes faster, your action, reaction time has to be spot on, or it goes sideways on you, but, uh, we're gonna get there for sure this month, and so, uh, once we do, because it's a driver, it's gonna go fast. Like, you're gonna see a lot of paint really quick, because it is a driver and not a push behind, so.
Is it real hard to drive?
Sorry?
Is it hard to drive?
It's, it's awkward, because it articulates in the center. It's not like a car.
Right.
It's almost like a loader. If you feel over that, so the controls are different than any like, you vary with that.
Like an articulated tractor.
Exactly.
There you go.
Yep.
Not it.
They still didn't use two, but we're gonna get there.
I know some guys that help you.
Volunteer?
That is not a report. Moving on to city minister.
Uh, just a couple of quick things. I know we've been keeping you up to date on TAP, so the, the bid opening for the TAP project will be this Thursday at two o'clock. So, I don't know if we'll be ready for action at the second meeting in July or not, but that's kind of the, the goal for accepting the bid. The bid will have to be confirmed by MODAT before we can bring it to you for approval, so it'll really come down to how quickly MODAT can review that bid and, and confirm the low bid for us. Other than that, I know I reported via, via email, but our wastewater funding was vetoed from the budget at the state level. Um, a lot of confusion and misinformation going around online right now, like this doesn't stop our project. You know, our project was planned and started under the assumption that we would not receive money from the state budget. Uh, the state budget was sought as a way just to alleviate some of the rate increases that we're going to see over the next few years. Uh, we're going to continue to evaluate other options to try and, and bring cost savings to the project, but the project is still moving forward as planned. They're on schedule, so that project will be completed around this time next year. Um, over the next month, month and a half, our agendas here will be full of all the items required to borrow money for this project, uh, so we'll get a little more involved in, in that process. Once we start going out, uh, for bond sale, um, it may require special meetings, but we'll keep you apprised of what that schedule needs to be to, to quickly borrow money and, and keep this project moving forward.
Sir? City turn report?
Yeah, just to follow up on what Kyle said, uh, the veto from the governor. Uh, in fairness, he vetoed two hundred and eight line items, uh, stuff all over the state, so it's not like he sat down and picked on Little Ashland specifically. Uh, we have other clients that are in the same boat. Um, I do have something for you all enclosed.
Okay, thank you, sir. Public Works directors.
Good evening again. Um, this is the July first Public Works report. Um, as I mentioned, we're cleaning up the shop, um, maximizing the space that we have there. We have a lot of space. It's just kind of not been managed very well. Part of that, again, is this metal, uh, cleanup, and then the other part I mentioned is the sale surplus items. Um, we're refocusing on the city CMMS program. That is the computerized maintenance and management system. Ours, our name brand is, is that is Brightly. Uh, we had a rollout a couple years ago, and it's being underutilized a little bit, I would say. That's the software that we use to basically track and manage work orders, assets, and the maintenance itself. Um, so we've had faces come and go, and so we're gonna basically re-kickstart that program and make sure we're using it to its, um, to its full extent. It's a pretty robust program, but we're only using bits and pieces of it, so essentially, it's just a kind of a retraining, um, of everyone here, so we're all on the same page, and we all know what we need to do with it. And it's, again, it's, it's a pretty good program, just not using it enough. Under the street repairs and maintenance, as I mentioned, uh, too big, a one big concrete patch on Peterson today, some concrete panels were poured. That was today on Peterson. Working with break time, the convenience store near the roundabout, um, do have their, their corporate office and I are having a discussion about, everyone knows the, the damage there that's around the roundabout. Like, some people call it the Grand Canyon. They'll just call it a pond. Um, there's nothing I can do, you know, to get MODAT to, you know, a mind to ask to change that radius, so the trucks are gonna go over that thing, um, regardless of what we do. Uh, so what we're gonna do is, we're currently talking to them about relocating their sprinkler lines away from it, because the problem's being made worse, because it's always full of water. So, the first truck that went through it, it was nice and soft, and the second truck, it was softer, and as it gets lower, it, it keeps accumulating more water. You've all seen it. That's why they call it a pond. So, I've got them to, at their expense, to move that irrigation out of there, and what I'm gonna intend to do is just fill it up with road base, essentially classify rock that they put under roads. And at the end of the day, it's not gonna be beautiful. It's gonna be better than it is now, to, to make it passable, so they don't keep rutting it. So make a, a surmountable curve, a surmountable service that when the truck, they will turn, it'll support that weight, and it won't look like the eyesore that it currently is. So, working with them on that and their irrigation company. Under stormwater, as I mentioned, they, they keep coming in. Uh, stormwater, some of them are, are fairly valid, and other ones are not. Um, but under stormwater, uh, a repair to Johnson and Henry Clay Stormwater Structure will be happening in mid-July. The precast structure for that is currently being made. Uh, that's the Orange Barrel, if you know the area, um, Henry Clay and Johnson. Uh, numerous other stormwater issues presenting themselves. I haven't actually been out to everything on my list to get them into our work order system. Uh, the pre-construction meeting for Oak Street and Caspen Circle stormwater improvements went off last Thursday. Work to begin on that project is August first. Under park improvements, a couple unused park amenity footings were removed for safety reasons, and the replacement of colored mulch is scheduled, that will happen in July as we get time, uh, as the board approved, uh, colored mulch addition again. At the wastewater treatment plant, wow, construction is going berserk there. Um, you, you can go down in that area, it would be dodging trucks. Uh, so what they're doing now is, uh, they're at the point where they're, um, pre-pouring footings, they're about to pour what's called a mud slab. Um, the steel I beams or their H beams are actually planted. Uh, when they pour the mud slab, then they're gonna prepare the, the main slab footings, and that's, uh, probably about seven feet underground. There's a big trench in there, basically. Ton of activity. Um, also at the plant, an automated waste sampler was repaired. Um, they have a sampler that automatically takes samples and keeps them cool, so they can meet regulations. Uh, we're waiting for a quote for one of the plant's two screw grip drives. Have you ever been there? In fact, that brings up a point. If, at some point, we should probably do a tour. I'm not saying now, but the board would like to, and there's enough, uh, going on down there to see, other than holes, maybe we could arrange a tour and talk, talk that project over as it, maybe it's later this summer. But, uh, anyway, back to the, the grip drive, the, the bearings are squeaking. They're, um, they shouldn't be due to be replaced yet. They said five years. It's only been three. Uh, however, they are what they are, so we're waiting on a quote from that, and you'll probably see me standing in front of you when I get that quote. Um, again, some other smaller things. Conduit, uh, which you'll see when you're down there, that's carrying the air supply lines for the air operated valves around the clarifier being repaired. Um, I have one big item I'll circle back to on the wastewater plant. So with sewer collections, uh, repairs are made to the mission SCADA communication system that we use to alert us to, for alarms. Um, also, that would, I think would probably be worth doing, um, whatever the board would like. I can do a live demonstration of actually our SCADA system. If I plug my laptop in, you see it on the screens, it'd kind of be a neat demonstration of, I kind of geek out on that stuff. It's, it's a cellular communication SCADA, which is supervisor control data acquisition system. That basically tells us pump runs, uh, runtimes, alarms, uh, things like that. It's kind of neat. Um, an electrical breaker needs to be replaced at Baptist Home Lift Station, ATS, automatic transfer switch. Quote for is coming on that. Um, stormwater issues, ionized issues that have been identified at several lift stations. I mention this because some of them, ionized meaning inflow and infiltration, basically groundwater going into our sewer system. Remember, every gallon of sewer that we have to treat, we pay for, and, uh, we don't want to do that, so we try to mitigate or limit the ionized, the clear water, the storm are going into the sewer system. The amount we have is considerable. Um, so getting back to where this comes in with lift stations, is many lift stations here, unfortunately, are built on grade, and so when we get an eight inch, eight point three inch rain event, the, the lift stations, the sanitary lift stations act as stormwater catches. So it catches, and where you put lift stations, you put them in low line, low elevation areas, and some water will come in and go straight into the lift station, and there, there's our ionized. So, some of these can be mitigated by simple berms and swales. Others I will actually, you have to buy structures for and raise them up out of that localized flood plain to get them out of, prevent them from being drained for stormwater. But that is definitely happening right now, and each lift station is site specific as to what the solution to that is, but, uh, working on that as well right now. I haven't even inventoried the mulch, but several already I've found are doing it. So, quick discussion here, because it's a beautiful night, but, a northeast regional lift station, northeast regional lift station is just to the west of the airport. It's our largest lift station, um, at sixty-four horsepower. Those are our largest motors. And it was designed to handle the future, uh, loadout capacity of Honda Rosa Cartwright. It's the, uh, business park there next to the airport, and it was sized for full buildout, so that's why it's sixty-four horse, two sixty-four, sixty-four horsepower motors. Again, the largest station we have. Back in twenty twenty-three, spring of twenty twenty-three, one of those, um, one of those submersible motors and the VFD that controls it, variable frequency drive, had an issue, excuse me, I've been talking all day, power issue where the motor had died, the VFD had died, and- And so basically, we're running on one pump. So the one pump on the lift station is kind of the analogy where you're flying over the ocean with one engine, excuse me. If that engine goes, we don't have a backup. So in 2023, I'm kind of retracing the steps of what was done in the past. The replacement quote for that gear, that motor and that VFD and that control were $80,000. It was never done. So basically, what I'm saying is that's an outstanding issue and a big one. What I'm trying to do is retrace the steps of what was done and not done. Excuse my voice. And so I'll be standing in front of you again when I find an answer for that. Oh, boy. It won't be cheap, but I'm hoping to not have it be $80,000. And then last but not least, excuse me.
I was gonna get your water.
Oh, I still work too. Yesterday, at the wastewater treatment plant, excuse me, a blower, which the plant has two blowers, had a catastrophic failure. The the blower basically provides dissolve oxygen to the treatment plants that the bugs have. Thank you, sir.
Of course.
Lot of talk.
Your fine, sir.
So this blower had a history of failure. It's not our first failure on this blower, it had been a history, it's actually the fourth failure. So as you can imagine, that's why I'm talking about it, it's expensive. So the quote for a remanufactured blower is $35,000. This is our fourth failure. So today, we met with the manufacturer's rep. And we're basically gonna create a white paper, an autopsy, why does this keep failing? He didn't have an answer. They're gonna take our blower back, take it apart, have engineers look at it. The reason why it's so important besides the price tag is that we're putting in more blowers of the same model for this for this expansion. So there is an air of urgency here to try and figure out what is going on here. I think it is systemic, I don't think we have bad luck. So there'll be many discussions about this soon, once we find out exactly what the heck is going on there. But that's ongoing and one of the many things on the on the list. Any que, any questions about anything?
He says one of two blowers?
Correct, sir, yes.
And how many are we putting in for the expansion?
I believe we're putting two more in, but they're larger.
Bigger. They're bigger?
They're actually larger than the ones we have now.
It's the same company?
Correct. Now, this company is a, is a, it's a good company. These are high quality items, you know, but typically, a blower of the last 30 years. Blower is usually the oldest thing on the plant. Blower will be there when the guy that started the plant retires. So that's what's so troubling about this and what makes me think it's a systemic issue. It's an application issue or an engineering issue. Has to be, there's something going wrong, whether, there's, we discussed that a lot today. Very polite sparring with the manufacturer. And I know he's on the spot, but so are we. We're gonna have to foot the bill for another, for another blower unless they determine that they're imagine it was something wrong with this one and I don't think so. This blower was rebuilt less than two years ago at great expense, I believe. And we're checking on serial numbers to confirm that. But it's, it's, it's a problem and we need to figure it out soon. So so we can go with confidence and knowing that this, the submittal for this larger blower is gonna serve the city well. And right now, I can't answer that until we find out exactly what happened, so.
So they are responsive to your inquiries?
Yes.
You say sparring and I think that's probably appropriate.
It was, it was very polite arguing.
Needless to say, if you get a roadblock, I can help you with that.
Don't take it.
Yes, sir.
And hopefully it doesn't. I will take you up on that immediately.
I mean, I know, I mean, you don't misunderstand me, I don't wish to escalate.
No, no.
Having the lawyer in the room is a confrontational step, but it does tend to focus attention.
And we may come to that. Right now, I remain positive, we don't have any answers.
As long as they're receptive and you're getting replies.
So far.
Keep, keep, you know, whacking away at it, but, you know, at some point, a discussion about warranties, a discussion about, you know, manufacturer defects, that sort of thing, may be justified.
Absolutely.
Is it a foreign company?
No.
No, manufactured in Germany.
It's manufactured overseas, Germany.
But it's a car.
Yeah. One other note is the the remanufactured unit. I may end up talking to you about that quote, only because it's the only one on the shelf. A new blower of the same specifications from the factory will take 26 weeks to get here. Now, again, I use that same analogy, the plane over the ocean, one engine, if that one fails, you're going swimming. If our blower fails, we're gonna be famous, we can't do it. So, I mean, there's not, there's not a, there's no safety net where we are right now, so unfortunately, I think.
Some of you have a table or news is the same conundrum we found ourselves in a year and a half ago when we bought a new one, so.
Exactly.
I mean, with us buying two more, two more of this expansion going on, they should be able to help us out a little bit and work with us.
That's my hope. That's my hope, because we can switch gears, right? We can switch gears to another manufacturer if we don't get a response, so.
I would echo Todd's point on this, though, like, you know, like this, this, if it keeps going out, this is supposed to be a 30 year part. Like, there's gotta be either a warranty claim or a manufacturer defect.
Product liability implied mortality certificate.
Yeah, there's something we can do to have them, like, step up at the plate. We're not, like, not fully us footing a $35,000 bill. Like, we can, we can find a way to hold them accountable, accountable for their product.
I would like to, unless they find something operationally, something on our end, operator error. It's possible, we threw out seven different scenarios, could be, could be, could be, it doesn't mean anything. I mean, so the only hesitation I have is we're looking at their staff and their engineers to tell me the answers. So again, if we have doubts, then we'll have to go to a third party. Again, this is escalation, but I'm gonna give them the benefit of the doubt until I can start getting some answers, so.
What is that?
That's all I have for now. Thank you.
I know, this, okay.
Yes, sir.
This whole deal at Y and Break Time is ridiculous. For one, that MODO won't fix it.
Yeah.
But side of the point, like, I'm not a rocket scientist here, but is there any way we could just put a sign as you're leaving Break Time that says, no trucks to the right so that they have to go left?
Yeah, well, we can put a local road embargo in place. There's been past discussions about evaluating that to restrict truck traffic on East Side Drive.
Yeah, yes, as you, as you leave Break Time, there is actually a sign that says trucks. It needs to be bigger, because I haven't seen it.
Yeah.
Wow, but, I mean, there's, the way I see it, we have two options. We could have MODO cut the curb, they're clearly not willing to do that. And if a truck kind of turned right out of there, we could ask MODO to remove those yellow things. They don't want to do that.
No, they don't, it's part of the plan.
Chief, earmuffs? Or we could take a tractor and just get rid of them.
Well, if you've noticed, those yellow delineators.
Prostitute.
About once a week, once a week I drive by there and I pick up more delineators. There's hardly any of them left. Like, I picked up nine delineators in the last month.
I don't even, I don't know how a farmer in this town can get through there.
They get struck and I pick them up and they're not replaced. So again, I haven't reached out to MODO to, to give me more delineators.
I wouldn't. They're, I mean, it's, it's senseless, I don't, I don't know who designed that. I'm sure there's some engineer guy down in MODO that really gets paid for what he does, but what truck would ever make that turn? I couldn't even make the turn with a 37 foot trailer.
Yeah, I can only judge it by the results that we're seeing and they're not great, to be generous, but.
To your point, the truck traffic should be directed to the roundabout only.
Yeah.
And not turning on East Side Drive, that's, we can certainly evaluate eliminating that as an option.
Which may have to be, we'd have to coordinate through MODO. All of that is MODO easement, MODO right away.
We can, we can, we can embargo turning on to East Side Drive, because that's our road. And MODO has washed their hands of that. Like, if that's what we want to do and evaluate, we can have traffic study done and.
Jesus Christ, traffic study.
We've got a prostitute here.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Or we could do with the school, they can just go in there and do it. Does that not solve that?
Can I get a motion for that, Sam?
Jeff is at a softball game, his report isn't a packet, should you have questions?
Living on the boardroom. All been done with you.
Just want to follow up on what I brought up last meeting, that drainage on Martha Crump.
So Kevin has been out there?
Two days after, yeah, I saw him drive through the water, that was the extent of his fast drive. Two days after I brought that up, there's a, I don't know if he's autistic, maybe to have challenged, over teenager. Riding his bike, hit that area with his bike. The bike went flying about 10, 12 feet. Kid busts this head open, he's bleeding down his face. I tried to talk to him, he's not very communicative at all. I told him I was gonna go inside and get towels and bandages to kind of clean him up a little bit. When I came out, the kid was gone. I called Boone County's own emergency number, asked if they could have somebody respond to check on the kid and make sure he was okay. Because took a hard fall, knocked one of his shoes off, head was cut open, bleeding. I got absolutely no response up, I didn't want to have that. I called Doris, I emailed Kyle and let both of those guys know what happened.
So have you received my, one, have you received my email, because I responded to you?
Yes.
Two, have you checked your voicemail, because Officer Ozenberg called you about that issue? He gave you a call back.
He didn't leave voicemail.
It's right in the call notes.
He didn't leave voicemail? I never got a call from him. I pulled up my phone record and showed you.
All right, well, I did my due diligence, followed up on it. Ozenberg called you, I don't know where the miscommunication there was. Kevin's been on site twice, he's been at your door at least once to try and communicate with you on the stormwater issue. I believe he has put it into a work order, but I'll let Kevin speak to it if there's a desire to get an update on it.
I think, Kevin.
We're all looking at you, should have said something there.
Did you get my card in the door, sir?
No, I was using my front door, so I have it out there.
Uh, is there a time you want to meet, like?
I'm there all day, every day.
Somebody's really on.
Let's not blame them.
I'll give you another card and you can, you can contact me.
Okay, because it's even 10 times worse during the winter. I can't even get to my mailbox, the corner there, Pinto Penny, is probably a 10 foot wide sheet ice. I've had a car actually hit that ice, ended up in my front yard. And I know this past winter, there were two backgoats out there breaking up the ice, I don't know who that was.
Yeah, let's chat it up.
It's, it's been this way for 10 years. And I couldn't tell you how many kids have fallen out there and adults. And a few adults that have fallen and hurt themselves and knocked on my door, I'm like, hey, that's not my problem, that's a city easement. All that runoff, it belongs to the city, they were supposed to maintain that ditch, which hasn't happened after the first year. And it's overgrown now, the water doesn't drain good, it just sits. It's, there's bug problems.
This is mad.
And the silt and sludge in the street is horrible. So I don't know how they're gonna address that.
Kevin, a little schedule time. Thank you, sir.
Alvin Raycraft?
Well, you've already addressed it, the striping. I've had three different people last week ask me about when they're gonna strike, especially out here, especially out there.
Out in front is the biggest problem at the moment, because you have a left turn lane and then you have a straight and a right turn lane.
Yeah.
And there's no direction there, no arrows.
They don't know which way you go.
To go. And, you know, people that live here know the, the system, basically. But people that are visiting us don't understand that, you know, there's a left turn, a right turn, straight, something like that. That's where the confusion's coming. So that's what.
For awareness, for those that don't know, we have two full-time streets employees.
I know.
One has been here for three weeks.
I know, no, I agree.
It's on his priority list, but it's on the priority list of about 5,000 different things.
I know, he's got a long list. That it?
Alvin Cogan?
No, pardon?
On the turn?
I just want to recognize, we have Senator Weber and his chief of staff here tonight, thanks for coming. I might be the first statewide elected official here since I've been elected. I know, first person above Board of Alderman, so appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Alvin Bill?
So on the striping thing, I will say, the corner of Liberty and Kennedy Clay, we also have turn lanes there and I'm not sure there's any indication of which one goes which direction, because I have seen a lot of people do a lot of things that have a lot of different lanes there. So I realize, like, I'm in no rush and it doesn't bother me, because it's pretty obvious when you pull off to the right, like, right, that this is a right-hand turn lane, but striping there, I think, will be another thing. And like Sam said, we have Senator Weber here, so I would yield a minute of my time for my report to him. If that's, Todd, that's probably not allowable, right? But I'll do it anyway, so Senator Weber, if you want to introduce yourself to the board and the mayor here.
Yeah, you can save it for general comments if you want to.
General comments, yeah. Do we have general comments? Okay, in general comments, we will.
I wasn't gonna let him talk.
Might as well be striping to that, but did you say that you're starting with the Optimus parking lot? Is it that private property?
We're not, we're not striping it because it's public or private, we're using it as a practice.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's a valid idea.
It's a soft ball to start, so splatters, you know, it's not perfectly straight.
Yeah.
They're okay with anything, so that's the intent.
Okay, yeah, it's just, it's just a practice.
Practice.
We have, like, no, there's a little strip of concrete mass all down at the old works and that's the only spot outside of our own parking lot. So we figured, all right, go up there where it's out of sight and if it's ugly.
I just don't want that, that parking lot to delay getting what has been athorned in our sites for the last two years.
Can't wait to see that on Facebook.
That's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
Move on. Start with a standard line on a man, just.
That's why I said it's the driving law, like a trial.
We'll let you know when we're out of Optimus, though.
All right. Moving on to general comments for the public, Senator Weber? Please say your name, address.
Stephen Weber, I'm the state senator from Boone County, live in 3412 Godfrey in Columbia. So first off, thank you for letting me say a few words. Thank you for the work you do on the city council. I'm sure that the pay does not make up for all the hours you've gone on here, here doing this, so thank you for doing it. Just a little bit about myself, I'm a Boone County guy, grew up here, grew up in Columbia, lived there most of my life. Did try to become an Ashland resident a couple of times. Tried to buy a house here a few times back in 2021, it's really hard to do, buy a house in this community. They go quake, which is a tribute to, to, to Ashland. And also, I'm sure brings a lot of challenges along with it. My other connection here, I did play catcher on the Southern Boone baseball team in the Show Me Games back in like 93 or 94. Did not win a medal, sorry, but I tried my best. And my, my coach, Farin Clumby, was a guy from Southern Boone, so that's why he put me on the team. So to back up what I care about in the state senate, I, I'm very proud to be from Missouri. I've lived here my whole life, I'm gonna live here the rest of my life, I'm gonna be buried here. And so fighting for this county is my top priority. I spend as much time as I can trying to bring resources to this community, fighting for this community. I worked, you know, it's really awesome having Councilman Deal in the, in working in the senate, just I can ask him questions, you know, he's always available. We worked with him, with Mike Groth, who was lobbyist, who got the money for the Ashland sewer project. Really disappointed that that money got vetoed, as was mentioned. Really disappointed, um, that, that money got vetoed. Um, as was mentioned, I, I don't think we did anything wrong. I mean, there was two hundred projects that got vetoed. Um, if you're interested, I'd like to try again next year and see if there's a way we can get it done. But, uh, that's the kind of thing that I'm, as a state senator, I care about doing, is projects like that, that make this community a little bit better, a little bit easier, uh, to live in and to, to make specifically things that can make a long-term difference, uh, for, for our county and for our home. So that's my background. Um, Carla Seeks, my chief of staff, uh, shared my senate campaign last year. Uh, this is her, she's going into her fourth year working in the senate. Um, so, uh, if you, if you, if there's anything we can do, um, for, for the community, please reach out to me. I'd love to, to do whatever I can to be helpful. Um, and just kind of the way the timeline of elections works, I was elected in November. Um, pre-filing was December. Session started in January. And so getting around and, and doing things like this, uh, is a top priority for me to summarize. I didn't really have a chance to while session was going on. Uh, but I want to be available and I want to try to be as helpful as I can be. So happy to take any questions and if not, thank you all very much for, for your time.
And cancel getting that veto overruled?
I, I doubt it. Um, so the way the veto overrides work, they have to start in the chamber of origin. So, uh, this is appropriation bill, so it started in the house. So I, I would have no problem making the motion to override the veto. Uh, but it's got to actually get out of the house first and get over to me. And I, I think honestly, that's probably very unlikely. Um, so, uh, I, I was really frustrated just because I, to me, that's the kind of project that, that government should be involved in. And I, I know it makes a big difference. And there was another project for, uh, up in Northern Columbia, around the sewer extension that got vetoed as well. Um, so I'm, I'm pretty frustrated about that. I want to try again next year. Um, and I want to try to work with the governor's office to, to figure out what their problem, who their concern was and see if we can figure out a way to address it. I, I really do try to solve problems rather than just throw partisan bombs. Um, I, I've had that role before in my life. I'm capable of doing that, but that's not the thing I want to do. The thing I want to do is actually get stuff done for people. So rather than just go out and, and trash somebody for, you know, why they vetoed the, the money, I want to actually sit down with them and say, hey, understand why they did it and see if there's a way we can address why that happens so that we can not have to veto, uh, next year. But in the meantime, I know that doesn't help when you have to make decisions on bombing and stuff like that. So very frustrated. All right, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. I have my favor time. Can I get a motion to go into closed session to vote on, uh, to talk about chapters six one zero dash zero two one legal actions and six one zero dash zero two one hiring and firing of dispendables? Make a motion? I'm moved. Uh, second.
Second.
Alvin Lewis?
Aye.
Alvin Bill?
Aye.
Alvin Turner?
Aye.
Alvin Coburn?
Aye.
Alvin Raymancraft?
Aye.
Alvin Lewis? Alvin Denny?
Aye.
Aye.